Good evening. We call this meeting to order. This is February 13, 2023, at 6:30 PM at the Rosewood Center, 418 East Main Street, in Irving, South Carolina. Welcome, everybody, if you can see everybody here. Okay, we are going to go ahead and get started. And I'm going to ask Councilwoman Gray Deal if you can give our energy for this.
Thank you for today for the beautiful little checks together. And we've been able to vote there. Just continue to work at our city, being our council. You help us to make the right decisions as we're looking at affairs in effect of our city as a whole. Now, we just trust that you continue to guide us. And we pray that you open up our eyes to your services we do. And I mean, just thank you for your many blessings for family and also to our citizens.
Amen. Thank you. The stand people's right. I declare the meeting to the flag of the United States of America. And to recover what stands one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all. All right, so by way of mail, since I want to congratulate our Liberty High School wrestling team. They are state champs, so. And also, we, another announcement is that our city hall is now officially moved today. It was official date to be opened at 119 West Front Street. So we're very excited. We're grateful to have found a building that suits our needs, the timing. And just thankful that we're able to get our staff into a nice building. And someplace that we can meet value. I got to a point where I couldn't even invite anybody into my, into my mayor office for any kind of meeting. So we're very grateful that that, that that happened. And I'm grateful for our staff as well. They worked hard last week on top of all of their other duties to move things out of there and get yourself set up. And we're, we're up and running, so great news. All right, next on the agenda, we've got appointments. So we've got Philip Trotter, who is the Director of Community Development that we want to appoint today. And I'm going to ask Mr. Calvert, if you could just give us a brief description, description of his job duties, please.
Yes, ma'am. Is this working?
Yeah.
Working now? Yep. Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, we're very fortunate to have Mr. Trotter on our staff. He is the, the new Community Development Director. He comes with outstanding qualifications. He was the building official for the County of Pickens for several years. After that, he was the City Administrator for the City of Pickens. And so we found it was something that he was interested in kind of doing for us on a part-time basis. And so for us, it was definitely a, a win for, for the citizens of Liberty because of his, his, his quality of service to the businesses and the people already. Given, given, you know, examples of things like calling it a breath of fresh air, being able to communicate with him the way they are. So yeah, I feel we're very lucky to have him as a Community Development Director, if you so choose to appoint him. Thank you.
So I think all council, we've all had a chance to meet Philip, and he's going to do an excellent job for us. So we want to go ahead and make this official and appoint him tonight so that I can get a motion to appoint Philip Trotter as our Director of Community Development.
I'll make a motion.
All right, I've got a motion by Councilwoman Gray Deal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Councilmember Whitaker. Do you have any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Philip Trotter as the City of Liberty's Director of Community Development, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
There we go, and yes, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the public session. We have speakers.
Can you hear me? Maybe? We had one sign up who canceled at 2:50 for today.
So they canceled?
Yeah, they canceled.
All right, so none tonight. All right, so we will move right along. For the approval of minutes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for January 9, 2023, or a regular session? Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Schumanladen. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Councilmember Pageant. Do I have any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving minutes for January 9, 2023, regular session, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. More unanimous. Okay, approval of our special session minutes for January 24, 2023. Do I have a motion for that, please?
All motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Massey. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilmember Whitaker. Any discussion on that one? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving our special session, January 24, 2023 minutes, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, on to unfinished business. We've got second reading. Reading of 2023-01, it's a 100% annexation free holders petition for 175 airport road property. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gray Deal. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Councilmember Schumanladen. Do I have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the second reading, approving the second reading of 2023-01, the 100% annexation free holders petition for 175 airport road property, please signify by raising, oh, I didn't ask discussion, did I make that discussion? Okay, sorry, I didn't write it on my notes. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, moving right along. Okay, it's in the news this. We've had some discussion on this in our public session. Going to ask for a motion for first reading of 2023-02, which is the rezone of the opening or just from 501 to 501A. And I'll go ahead and ask people, people that wants to give the brief synopsis on that one.
I don't think my thing is working. It's going to residential to commercial for, for duplexes. Sorry, you caught me off guard. It's going to duplexes.
Yes. Okay, so that one, yes, to change the rezone that to allow the duplexes there. Do, um, do I have a motion on that one? My motion. Do I have a motion by Councilmember Whitaker? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
And I have a second by Councilmember Schumanladen. Do I have any discussion on that?
Where's the, um, the, um...
Um, the, the opening minutes?
Yeah, where was it?
Just kind of the southern monitors? Yes. Yes, and, um...
This weren't there. Oh, one of them.
Yeah, I was just trying to air because we used to live on sometime for a little while, but I do.
You have any, you got a picture in your mind? Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of the first reading of 2023-02, rezone of the opening ordinance from 501 to 501A, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye. All right. Right, unanimous. So we're slow on the draw on that one. Okay, we're moving on to the first reading of 2023-03, amending language in manufactured home ordinance. And Ms. Locken, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Um, they just added the language to, um, section 52, 5.2, 3, A through E. It just talks about adding vinyl siding, cedar or wood siding, wood grain, stew so siding. I don't know how you...
Stucco.
And breaker stone siding.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this ordinance as read?
I'll vote.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Massey. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
And I have a second by Councilmember Pageant. So any discussion?
The reason just came back up at the great place that the Liberty Farmers Group talked about this, the number of years. Is that, is that the same thing? It looks like the same ordinance.
It is the same ordinance, but the only thing that's being altered here is we were, it was brought to our attention that the language seemed vague when it came to like siding and stuff like that. So this clarified what that language is.
We're looking at changing this ordinance, did we not just?
That's the only change. The rest is staying exactly the same.
That was the only thing that was brought to us through the planning, um, general decision, because that wasn't, that wasn't clear.
Okay. I'm just concerned that we're still not addressing the issue with the age of, the age of, because that was brought to our attention when they presented all it. And it's still the same in the word that we still have that with the twenty year?
Yeah, well, that was brought up during the working session, and the council decided to stick with just those alterations at this point.
But that was the only thing that went out. Okay, so any other discussion on that one? Okay, all those in favor of first reading of 2022, 2023-03, amending the language in manufactured home ordinance, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would oppose.
Aye.
Okay, so we have Councilmember Gray Deal as opposed.
And I would just like to say, I'm worried that I thought that we didn't address about this. I wasn't there for the working session. But just wanted to be concerned that we're still not addressing that. While we had the one best, the mobile parts.
Well, but you weren't there for...
No, that's what I'm saying. I know it was nothing from that.
Yeah, so we did go over it, and so it was addressed.
Um, they did get a planning commission, and they did not recommend adding more years.
Yeah, changing. They didn't recommend changing that part.
Is there, do we have that, is that justificational?
They didn't find any need to change it. That was all. I mean, we, we went, we took it to them to decide whether or not they felt it was applicable to change the age requirement in any way. And they felt that looking, and I don't want to put words in their mouths, so you're going to want to talk to them and look at their minutes. Uh, but essentially, it was, had to do with statistics or surrounding communities and, and how they've handled that. They looked at theirs and then looked at ours and felt that there was no need to recommend changing the date. But please look at their minutes, because I don't want to put words in their mouth.
And discussion with our, um, attorney as well?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I just couldn't hear. Who was it? Didn't make the presentation? I just couldn't hear. It wasn't...
I'm sorry. The planning, the commission.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so moving on to the first reading of 2023-04, the city seal. Move on that thing. Yes, okay. I'm bringing up the bigger picture, but if you see, you see that city seal is there on there. I'm just, oh, we got small, okay. All right, okay. Okay, so, of course, again, just to reiterate, we talked about these people, we talked about this in, in our work session. Um, just feeling, I know that the council felt like there's a need to update our city seal. It's a little dated and looking for something that's going to represent the city a little bit better. And as we were going through, trying to decide what we think that it should look like. We recently, I guess what, has been three years now, that we have our logo, our branding, our vision and branding for the city. So we have a new logo and, and thinking of not wanting to get too, too many different designs going. Um, I know in 2008, the city adopted the city flag. This is what we adopted as our flag. I think they did a good job on that. I think it looks nice flying on the flag staffs. And it's basically a variation of the flag. So I felt like, why don't we do something that incorporates the flag to keep a cohesive design throughout and not have too much going on? And as far as the city seal, we were looking, looking. And while this is what we think is the city seal, it was never formally adopted. It wasn't ever anything official. So this, I was going to pass this around. This is actually our current city seal. And it still says the town of Liberty. And we have been a city shield for a while now. Um, but as you see, it's not very, it's not very big. We didn't want too much design so that nothing is, is looking cloudy, that you can still make everything out. Turning this into the actual embossed seal. Okay, so of course, we would not, we'd be a lot, it would look just like that, this way. But then we could use this, um, official, our public works, you know, when they go out and they're, they're wearing their official uniforms. This is what we do on their uniforms. So, is that not around everywhere? So we're just trying to be cohesive with that. This is, this is the seal that I want to propose to council that we adopt as our official city seal. All right, so I'm going to ask for a motion that we adopt this as Liberty's official city seal. Do I have a motion? First reading of 2023-04.
I'll vote.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Schumanladen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Councilmember Whitaker. Do I have any discussion?
Yeah, we decided on the date.
Oh, yes, it was made a little bit bigger and...
Okay, it's still a little, really?
And you know what's that?
Okay.
And we can still move it up and make it a little bit bigger, yeah.
Any other discussion or questions on that?
What is the reason for using, I mean, I get it that we're using the variation of the flag, but what is the connection to the Maltrey flag that we have? The whole question of getting rid of the Liberty bill was Liberty doesn't have a connection to the Liberty bill.
Well, first was, well, is, this is South Carolina, Liberty bill is in Philadelphia. Uh, but then also the, um, Maltrey flag was also, um, known as the Liberty flag. That was another name for it. But then again, tying it into what we already have adopted as a city with a flag. Yes, Mr., Mr. Calvert, did you want to add something?
Well, yes, when, I was asked to research that particular logo. It was way back when we had actually some previous council members that asked me to look into, into that potential logo and if it did fit. Um, generally, the, the reasoning is, one, obviously, it has Liberty in the logo. But the Maltrey flag in 1876, um, that's when Liberty became the city, which is 100 years after the situation with the Maltrey flag. Uh, so the connection with Liberty being tied in 100 years after, uh, you know, the 1776 and the Maltrey flag. Uh, there's a lot of anecdotal evidence to, to show that we were actually named Liberty because of the Maltrey flag and what they did in 1776. I can try to get some of that to the council members if you'd like to, to see that, but that's, that's a main reason.
I wanted to make sure we had an actual connection, because that's one of the things we hear about the current city.
Absolutely.
Liberty bill has nothing to do with the city other than the restaurant. Um, so, you know, if we're giving, if we're giving you another symbol, we need to make sure there's an actual civic connection to it.
Yes, absolutely, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comment or discussion on that?
Yeah.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting this as our city seal and the start reading of 2023-04, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're unanimous. All right, thank you. Okay, next we are moving on to our department head reports. And Chief Field Stratt, you go first.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilman, Minister of Public. In January, we arrested 13 total subject trespassing DUI, filing a false police report, strong substance trafficking myth, second. Possession of distributed meth, all the usual suspects there. We are still working at getting our four new police officers trained, did their field training, progressing well. So hopefully, another couple of months, we'll be done with that. And be like some more, some type of normal, you know, the police department.
Very good. Thank you. And I must say, um, Mr. Calvert and I were at City Hall Sunday. So who, your officer that was on duty at the time happened to drive by and see us in there. And so we're being very vigilant, and the character of us, we stopped and came in to see who was at City Hall on Sunday.
We were standing there looking out the doors, and they could see us looking out the doors.
So I was very impressed and very, very glad to see us, so.
You were supposed to.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, any, any questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to public works. And I will go ahead and move that. The trash pickup, they had 34 tons. Cardboard pickup is five tons. Brush pickup, 26 loads. Grounders pickup is five tons. Water locates, 56. Very amazing. All right, and the recreation department report, Parks and Rec. Volleyball and flag football signups have come to an end. We will have three 12 and under and two nine and under volleyball teams. Flag football, they'll have a total of nine teams. Baseball and softball signups are going on now until the end of February. And the Red received a bid to host the 1000 boys state championships here in Liberty for basketball on the March 3rd, the 4th, and the 5th, in times to be determined. All right. And then our community development. We have, it looks like we have two re-investments. One of six golden friends, he wanted through 17th and 18th Street. All right, so next we got the city administrator report. And you'll have to speak now.
That's fine. That's what I was, uh, you guys are helping to bring it to you.
It's not going to be...
It doesn't work. Well, that's right. You might, you might be better to see the talking. You only access that you record. You make it city.
Yeah, that might be better.
That'd be better, that way they can hear y'all recording. Sure.
Okay, with the financial report, uh, the city had a meeting with Trey Ubenas from the ACOG. He was just assisting us to discuss our, our current budget as well as prepare for the beginning of the, uh, of establishing the mayor's 2023, 2024 budget. Uh, with a general oversight, I can report that we look to be on solid footing, uh, with no real increase, but with no real increase with the revenue, it's tough to say whether or not we will incur loss if they're admitting at the end of the budget year this year. I'm going to be monitoring that and letting the council know as we go along the next couple of months. Um, the city will seriously need to consider revenue initiatives to keep pace with the, uh, current economic climate. I know right now, the, uh, we've been trying to do our best not to have to raise any revenues, but with the current economic, uh, climate, we're not, uh, we're having a tough time being able to keep up with what our budget has and what, uh, costs are dealing right now. Um, administration is at 36.82. Um, police is at 44.20%. Public Works is at negative 1.08%, but I will explain that shortly. And Parks and Rec is at 31.23%. Uh, right now, uh, we are currently at day 215 of the 2022, 2023 budget, which comes out to 58.9% of the budget year. So in, basically speaking, we should be at about 40 to 41% per department. Administration, there's really nothing new to report here. Costs are in line with projections, uh, the cost of a special election, like I've mentioned in previous, um, council meetings, in addition to travel training that we've increased for our staff. Um, they have added, uh, to the budget in an unexpected way. Uh, much of the traveling training that will be reimbursed by the EPA, so the budget situation there should improve. The police department, uh, budget, the only real thing there to note is the maintenance of vehicles and uniforms for existing and new officers stands out. That's mainly because now we have a full staff of police officers, one in the past we haven't. So they've actually needed, and gladly so, more funds for uniforms and things like that. Public Works, like previous reports, uh, public works can be a bit confusing to look at, uh, but is not as low as the zero or negative 1.08 suggests. Uh, the reason for, uh, the miscellaneous amount is commercial trash service. That can be a little confusing, and next year's budget that will be moved to reflect it as a standout. But the real reason for the, uh, that percentage change is the capital outlay is included as a line item in Public Works. That's something in a new budget that we're also going to pull out, because when you put that there, that $233,000 regarding the, uh, the trash truck, it looks like a negative, but it's not actually part of Public Works' budget. Uh, so it's kind of a misinterpretation of what that budget reads. When you add those things back in, they're standing at 39%. So right, uh, very close to the 40%, 41% we're looking for. Parks and Recreation, uh, two areas of expense that are affecting the budget are the new gym flooring and Rosewood projects. Uh, the floor will be reimbursed through state funding, which is happening, uh, pretty much as we speak. Um, Christie's taking care of that. And, uh, Rosewood was partially reimbursed through insurance, but because Rosewood is considered a cultural center that we're, or at least trying to make something more of Rosewood for the, um, for tourists as well as visitors and, and our own citizens in public. There are hospitality funds that can reimburse that. So those parts of the budget will raise back up. Um, but when you count those items back into the budget, Parks and Rec is at a very healthy 48.37%. I know that all sounds very confusing. I apologize for that, uh, but right now with the way our budget, and one of the reasons why we are changing to a different software system is to make it much clearer to the council what is where and, uh, what is being spent. But the way this is now, because I'm going to make this a little more confusing, but we have a one pot, one bank account system that was here. We're going to fix those things. And so when you look at this budget, it'll be much clearer as to what is there, and it'll be much more accurate for you each month. So a little less confusing for you here, uh, much less to have to explain why it looks the way it does. It will be accurate. And that's what I'm pointing out at the bottom again, is that we are getting a new software system, and that new software system will be more accurate. It'll let us do separate accounts, uh, much more clearly for you, but it will also be $25,000 less a year than what we have right now. So better and more clarity for the council and $25,000 less a year. So I want to make sure I pointed that out. With the administrators' report, uh, I'd like to thank the council for their support and vision to lease and relocate the current city hall to 119 West Front Street. Uh, we looked at several locations, but the location chosen, I believe, is great for more turnkey, uh, business. Uh, we, we'd looked at several locations, the mayor and I, she tasked me with finding as many locations as I could. Uh, the most locations that we looked at would even be possible would have taken a significant... Uh, the most locations that we looked at would even be possible, would have taken a significant investment, uh, as well as time to get it fixed to where you could even use it. Uh, and, uh, several of those that we were very interested in, we found out were basically sold that week, so it was really bad timing. But, but I would like to, uh, but thank, uh, the council for that. Uh, the official opening day was today. Um, so it will take some time, uh, to get completely moved, uh, and have storage for everything at the old, uh, city hall. But it is open for business, so again, thank the, the council for, for that. Um, I'm working with an organization named Retail Strategies to assist with economic development in two areas. Downtown strategic vision and retail recruitment services. Uh, both will help with a multi-year effort to revitalize Liberty, not just downtown, but the entire city. Um, with grants, uh, with EPA, uh, the EPA grant, we have chosen two organizations. The EPA recommended we went with two, not just one, organizations to help us perform the assessments. We expect to begin a, a kickout meeting or actually, uh, begin our, there's the one Daniel that you should have found. Our kickoff meeting in the coming weeks. I always put one misspelled word to see if you'll find it.
That was a topic.
Oh, alright, yeah. Uh, began our kickoff meeting in the coming weeks. Uh, we'll be looking for an outreach coordinator as well to get input from the community as well as keep them informed of the progress. So there will be meetings, community meetings as we're going along, uh, to keep them informed as well as get input from the city as, for potential assessment locations and things like that. The skip grant, uh, unfortunately, there's no news on that. We've all been waiting, not just us, but, you know, citizens across the state are waiting to hear whether or not they're, uh, being chosen for that grant. Uh, it's, uh, we had a very strong grant, but we have no idea what, what, how the, uh, state is looking at that. They're regionalizing it, so, uh, they're not looking at it just as a city and looking how strong ours is, but ours in a regional aspect. Um, the ADA committee, uh, was started with department heads serving as members. But as ADA coordinator, I'm also tasked with appointing two city citizens to this, uh, committee. Um, I am appointing, uh, Hester Elrod and Bobby Woods as the citizen members and I'm confident in the valuable input they will provide. If anyone's interested, contact me, I'll be happy to, to point out their, more of their qualifications. But, uh, they have over 25 years of experience in this area between them, if not more. Um, I'm, uh, I will also continue the relationship with ABLE, the organization that came and did a presentation, uh, I think it was last meeting or the meeting before last meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, uh, yeah, I know the committee and ABLE, uh, and Liberty will continually improve our city as a welcoming environment to all. That's kind of the point of it, is to make sure that, uh, everyone has access to our, uh, our facilities and, and our, uh, events. And, uh, also, uh, I will also be, this, this one's new, uh, so I definitely want to get the council's input, but I will be establishing an administrator's town hall to discuss issues with the citizens of Liberty. Uh, each town hall will have a specific subject to get positive ideas and feedback on how to improve our city in those areas. Any member of the council is invited to attend this and witness the exchange of ideas. I hope to do it on Thursdays and the next one should be the week after the council, this council meeting. So the week after every council meeting, that Thursday will be this administrator's town hall. It'll be conducted here. It will be very informal, it's about back and forth discussing positive ideas and certain areas. Uh, and I think it'll be an excellent addition to what we're doing. The next one should be on February 23rd at 6:00 PM. So any member of the council is invited to attend that. Um, and, uh, again, be part of the exchange of ideas. And then the last thing I had was just to point out that I know that, uh, Councilman Graybeal was, uh, was wanting me to get, uh, with the Meridian Waste Company, some of the, uh, the calls they might have gotten for missed trash and, and things like that. I'm still gonna be working with them about if there's actual formal complaints, but the first thing I was able to get from them at least was, at this point, is the missed trash report. So you should have this list of the missed trash report. I will be actually going through this with them to see if they're, because some of these, it looks like they are, uh, more than once. So there might be some kind of issue there and I'll be working with them to find out what that might be so that that, uh, that doesn't happen anymore. And one of these on here is me, so you know that, you know, it's not anybody.
That's the bottom of the list.
What's that?
That's our house at the bottom of the list.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, it's not something that is just for, I mean, everybody's a part of this and, uh, please, if, if, if anybody in the community or anyone knows, uh, and had a, a missed trash pickup, feel free to call them and let them know so that we can figure out what might be happening and improve that. So I wanna make sure I got that.
I was gonna ask specifically about this, the, the website that we direct people to ask them to put in their address to determine, you know, to let them know that something's going on. When we put in our address for this one, they told us that we were not getting service by already.
Well, apparently you weren't because it didn't.
Well, I emailed directly. How you know them directly and did not get a response? And then emailed again and said, I, I kinda don't know what's going on, actually I'm council. And then, of course, I got a very, very quick response. But they were very polite about it, but, uh, if you, you know, what we could tell people was to go to their sites and you have to put in your address in order to file, you did not, you did not get picked up. And it actually said that we were not in the service area for already. And I've heard that from a couple of different.
Have you? See, then that's something, yeah, I'm glad you're making me aware because again, I, I, you know, we can't fix what, I don't know, Brooks, so thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure why it's not working, but it says we're not being serviced.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm definitely looking at, again, thank you for letting me know about that. Uh, and I can try to get, again, if there's, if they have a, if they have some type of list that shows their formal complaints, like, like the one you're talking about. I'll get you that added to this as well.
Michael, what they worked out on that? I know they, they had this U R S group, where they had a truck break down and they didn't tell them till about 7:00 PM. Usually they go to 2:00, 3:00 again. Everybody on our street complained and then broke down. So I don't know if there's, I thought there was some way of communicating if they were at the lane or if something happened or if things had been shifted, but nobody knew it. So if there's some system they have in place where they can identify the properties that were being picked up on time or if something happens and they get them that day they're shipping them forward, I think you would call a lot of them if there'd be a way of them following or texting or emailing or something to let us know that. We did have quite a few people on the street that were, oh, irritated that their trash was sitting out all day. What's with, uh, the breakdown? I mean, that wasn't something that could control, we just didn't know that until we did contact them.
Yeah, and you don't know for hours. Uh, thank you, yeah, again, these are things that I can talk to them about. We could figure out a way to have some type of communication structure. If something breaks down, they communicate with me and I can try my best to get it out to the public as to what happened, maybe Facebook, Twitter, uh, something of that nature and make sure the public gets that.
So is that all you have then for us, Michael?
Yes, yes ma'am.
That's it, okay. All right, and we'll move on to city council reports. Um, Councilwoman Leyden.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Leyden.
Nothing to report.
And then, please, Councilwoman Liberty.
Nothing to report.
Councilwoman Nasty.
Nothing to report.
Councilwoman Powell.
I'd like to report, well, it's good to see a lot of people around here tonight.
And Councilwoman Page. All right, and it is time to be entering executive session. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to enter executive session. This is pertaining to section 30 dash 4 dash 70 A1 personnel matters, beside an appointment, appointment, compensation, probation. Demotion of discipline or release of employee, student, or person regulated by a particular body or the appointment of a person to a particular body. Possible action may be taken following the executive session and it pertains to personnel matters, um, under city administration. So you have a motion to enter executive session.
My, my, my.
Sorry to speak out of turn. We're getting the runaround now and before you all go into the executive session, wanted to see who we need to talk to.
Okay, well, this is, I'm not sure what's going on here, but, um, we're, this is, we're going into executive session and we don't get comments from the, the public right now, so if you can wait out when we get, when we get, when we get entered into, um, executive session, everybody's gonna have to step out and Mr. Calvert will step out and you can talk with him about your matter.
Okay, we've done that, we've tried talking to the council, we keep getting shut out, but I'll try then.
Okay, if you ever need to speak in front of council, um, you, you have to follow the ordinance, you have to be a, um, city citizen. Um, you'll have to sign up, um, by Friday at 4:30, um, prior to our Monday meeting. If you are not a citizen, then you can call city hall and we can see what we can do about getting a meeting with you.
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so do I have a motion to enter executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Graybeal, does that sound?
Second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Powell, do I have any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of entering the executive session, please signify by raising your white hands at the top. Okay, that's unanimous. We are entering executive session.
Okay, you're good.
Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn the executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the executive session.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Powell, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
I have a second by Councilwoman Nasty, do you have any discussion? All right, all those in favor, all those in favor, sorry. Adjourning executive session, please signify by raising your white hands at the top.
Aye.
Men, so we are now out of executive session. All right, so that finishes our business for tonight. So now I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Graybeal, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Councilwoman Wicker, do I have any discussion? All right, all those in favor of adjourning our regular session, please signify by raising your white hands at the top.
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned, thank you.
Probably get away with it.
Very. Hasn't it?